Welcome back to another episode of Church and State with Christopher Farrar and Brian McCall. And we're happy to spend a little time with you discussing top occurrences in church and state. So I hope you had a nice Thanksgiving, Chris.
Yeah, I'm thinking of Chesterton's remark that the English should have a day, Thanksgiving to celebrate the pilgrims departure. Little humor there, little Thanksgiving humor.
Well, our Thanksgiving was Chesterton, where where the Catholic house, the sun just shine. There's lots of meat and good red wine. At least I've always found it so many commas domino. So we tried to live up to that.
You did a fine job.
Well, but while we were feasting, the world did move on. And we have a couple of stories, one in the state, one and then a little bit in the church to talk about. So the state is kind of an ongoing story. There's been an interesting new focus on school boards and public, public schools, really, I think that started with the COVID shutdowns. So you had this phenomenon, a lot of parents were seeing their children go to school online. So they were hanging around, listening frankly, to the utter garbage that was being taught to their children. And they had this sort of moment realizing, wait, this is what my kids have been learning for the past, whatever number of years, and I've started to wake up and bring matters to school boards. And what's been interesting is these, these parents reactions together with the school board. So I have two stories that we can use as kind of a springboard to talk about this. And that is one in Florida. So there was a county school board meeting in Florida where tempers were really agitated, as we've seen in a lot of these meetings, because some parents did a little research and found that there were four books in the libraries of this, the different libraries of the school system that were so obscene that they violated the Florida state obscenity laws. And these were in middle school libraries. I mean, they're actually so obscene, most stories wouldn't even describe what we're, what were in the books. And here's what's interesting. One of the school board members reacted on the side of parents. And she basically said, well, the school board never approved this. What's going on here? What happened to our lawyer, the school board lawyer, who was supposed to make sure we were compliant with state law, never brought any of this to our attention? And so this one school board member from Flagler County in Florida raised the issue. And then what would you think the reaction would be? Who would they attack? Maybe the moron who came up with the idea of putting obscene books in children's libraries? No, they attacked this one school board member. And they got together on social media and started attacking her and calling her names. And, and then when asked by the press, well, were you behind these attacks? They, they had no comment. And so first one, and then the second one is in Fairfax County, Virginia. So, so your home state. There, the parents discovered that the school board, and they've been doing this for years, had been distributing surveys to both middle school and high school students about their sexuality. And asking them, this is 12 year olds, how often they've had different sexual partners? How many different sexual partners they've had in the past few weeks? Then some of the questions, the kids came home and said to their parents, I don't even know what it was asking me about. And some of the things were, you know, things 12 year old children rightly shouldn't know about. The high school survey was even more kind of explicit and outrageous. And the parents showed up and are essentially told, get out of the way, we're in charge. We decide what we need to do for your children. And again, both these stories seem to show, I think something you and I would agree has been part of the public education system for a long time. The idea of when run by liberals, your children belong to us. We are going to basically brainwash your children and you just need to be quiet and keep paying your taxes.
Of course, this is a very old problem. And the problem is that of liberal dominance in the administrative state, which we see now with the COVID regimes, the lockdowns, the nonsensical mask requirement, the vaccines that are failing everywhere. And the more they fail, the more of the vaccination mandate is imposed. It's a plague on this country. I just wrote an article on this for the Remnant. And the plague can be summed up in one word, Democrats. It's a plague of the Democrats. You know, these people uniformly belong to the Democrat party. They vote for every presidential candidate who's a Democrat. They are Democrats. And until we rid them by getting them out of office, they will continue to plague this country. People have to use the political process to oust school board members, health, health officials at the county level, governors, mayors, and so forth, in order to restore some semblance of sanity, because people are crazy. They're crazy. Liberalism is a mental disorder.
It's funny, we laugh about it, but it, but it's really true, because often we try to engage the radicals, the Democrats in issue discussion. But it's really futile, because they're not actually interested in issues or principles. They're just interested in, you know, imposing their will. It doesn't really matter what you think.
They've lost the use of reason. And you know, these Catholics have always been taught that sin, particularly mortal sin, the gravest of sins, to which all of us are prone, take heed lest you fall, says Paul. That kind of sin darkens the intellect. So you lose the use of reason. These people are irrational. They don't respond to logic. They can't follow a syllogism. They are ruthless in the pursuit of their emotivist aims. They feel this is right or that is right. And they will impose it upon you based upon their emotional reactions to what they consider to be injustices, which are actually the correct order of things. So we're dealing with a pathological personality, i.e. the liberal, that has managed to insinuate itself into governance at all levels of this country, which is why the election of Trump in 2016 was a political miracle. And which is why the powers that be united as one throughout the globe to bring down Trump. Because he represented something that was completely unexpected as a political development, given the ascendancy of these crazy liberals. They are in fact lunatics at every level of government. You know, they call us extremists. Really? We're talking about people who think that boys can become girls, girls can become boys. You can put boys into the girls bathrooms. You can kill babies by the tens of millions. You can tell children that they should transition sexually and give them puberty blockers without parental consent. These people are absolutely stark raving mad. They are running the asylum and they call us extremists. That's what we're doing.
Well, and you can see in both of these stories, what they want to do, want to do is expose children to these, to obscenities, to sexual perversions as early in age as possible. I mean, this was the battle over so-called sex education decades ago that many people fought in, which frankly, compared to what they're doing now, looked, looks pretty mild. But it was the principle they wanted to get in there, expose children earlier and earlier and earlier, so as to corrupt their, their imagination, to put ideas in their mind. I mean, in many ways, what they want to do is the devil doesn't have very much to do to tempt children if they're, they're doing it for them. But is this, is this sort of a communist Marxist technique to, you know, go after the children in this way?
Well, I think the problem we're dealing with is broader than communism, broader than Marxism. It's the non serviam of the devil himself manifested in politics. And the situation we are in today is the end result of the so-called Age of Democratic Revolution, which was preceded by the Philosophical Revolution, which was preceded by the Religious Revolution sparked by Martin Luther. Pope Leo traces the whole development in his Enciclical Libertas. He shows how first came Luther, then came the philosophical rebels, then came the political rebels. And now we have what he called final disaster, the ascendancy of the liberal nation state, which recognizes no authority higher than itself. And if anybody objects, well, he has to be ostracized, ridiculed, destroyed politically and socially. And this is what Alexis de Tocqueville noted back in the 1830s, when he was visiting America. He said, nowhere has he seen less tolerance for differences of opinion than in the United States of America. Now, back then, he was talking about the intolerance of liberal opinions.
Right.
Now, quite the opposite has happened. Liberal opinion is in the ascendancy. And if you step outside the circle of accepted thought, you're ruined. The only option here is, again, the political process. Parents have to become activists. They have to run for school board positions. They have to out, oust these lunatics from their positions of authority. And that's what we're dealing with, lunatics.
Well, and you mentioned the 2016 miracle presidential election. And as much as a miracles that is though, I think this is showing people the importance of the Catholic principle of subsidiarity, of local decision making, because I think, I'll count myself among this at one point in my life. I think those would all got to vote for president. It's so important, very important. School board, whatever, I don't care. That not, not important. But I think what we're seeing, you mentioned health officials, school board officials, that these, these people who hide in the shadows, they're not, they're not on CNN all the time, actually have more influence over our lives in many ways than the President of the United States.
Yeah, we've seen this tug of war between the federal government and the states in our so-called federal system. There's a kind of oscillation going on. Sometimes during the COVID dictatorships, as they were emerging, there was an appeal to the federal government to override the liberal state governors. Because the governors in these blue states were tyrannizing people far more effectively than the federal government could. And on an issue like so-called gay marriage, the Defense of Marriage Act was federal legislation.
Right.
That was designed to override state protections, so-called, for marriages between two men or two women. So again, this is constant tug of war, but the only thing that's saving us now at this, at this given point in the process is whatever remains of the federalist system. So this pandemic, take the example of problems in the state. The pandemic actually is a virtual event. It's not a real event. It exists only in the political spaces controlled by Democrats. If you go to Florida, where I was recently to give a lecture, people have moved on. They're living their lives normally. People are obviously succumbing to this virus, principally the elderly with comorbidities, who can be taken out of this world by something like pneumonia or even a common cold. This is primarily a problem for older people. But the pandemic as such doesn't really exist, because a pandemic means a universal affliction that affects people of all ages, a plague, a literal plague that's killing young people, people who are not so young and the elderly indifferently. But the pandemic that we're talking about is a creation of the media and Democrat operatives. So if you get out of the spaces that they control into the red states, then you'll see that the pandemic really isn't a reality of our lived experience as Americans. You escape the bubble created by the media and you find yourself in the real world. Example, the Florida being the most shining example of that. But the control of liberals is so precisely correlated with these COVID dictatorships and these, these boards of education who are exercising dictatorial authority, that even though state law mandates certain things, Democrat-controlled localities are imposing their will, right down to the level of local school boards, the mayor of a particular town or the county commissioners, often in defiance of state law, impose draconian liberal measures such as COVID restrictions and outrageous Board of Education programs in defiance of the governor or state law. So again, this is a plague, a plague of these lunatical people who belong to the Democrat party, who have to be ousted from office by the political process. You know, we have an obligation to participate in that process, even though sometimes it seems like it's a choice between a liberal and somewhat less liberal candidate. We have at least a duty to mitigate the damage to the common good by voting for the most conservative candidate available. We can't do nothing. So the political process is a way out. Another option is the federal judiciary, and I'm involved in that in various litigations against tyrannical overreach in the name of limiting the spread of a virus whose spread has never been limited.
Well, and I guess our last, my last thought on these stories is it's interesting to see non Catholics who are mostly people present at these meetings waking up or discovering principles the Catholic Church has always upheld. So for example, and looking into the, the arguments going on in both the Florida and the Virginia case, a lot of the parents were saying, well, wait, we're the primary educators of our children. We're responsible for our children's education and you need to answer to us, right? We don't answer to you. And this is really what the Catholic Church has taught for centuries. I mean, most directly and recently Pius XI and his encyclical on Catholic education, that the parents, that's the whole reason for marriage, that primarily is for the rearing and education of children. And now parents can delegate that and can get help, maybe through schools or other institutions. But, but ultimately, the buck stops with the parents, that they are the ones who have to answer for the education of their children. It's interesting to see even non Catholics have waking up to this principle, which should be pretty obvious.
Well, what, what is political society if not the assembly of families who are the cells of political society? If you destroy the cohesion of the family, you destroy the political society. And right now, our political society is coming apart at the seams because of this sustained attack on the so-called nuclear family, which is God's plan for humanity. A man, a woman, and their children, reared to believe in God and to follow his commandments. If you take away that element of social construction, you have chaos, which is what we're experiencing now. So we have to, as I, as I've said, use the political process to try to bring back, as Leo put it, the form and pattern of the Christian Commonwealth, using, he says, the cankered modern liberties to the extent, to the extent that we can without violating morality or our consciences. We have no choice. We're stuck in this democratic framework. And we have to work within it to do the best we can, under the United States Constitution, rightly understood as a document which grants certain rights and privileges under God, which are subject to the limitations of the divine and natural law. So, you know, we lawyers who take an oath to the Constitution and happen also to be Catholics, do so with that understanding of what the Constitution means. But at least we can appeal to that document, the rights of man, as Cardinal Otaviani said, it should not surprise us that we appeal to the rights of man when the rights of God are not respected. So that's our option in this society. We have to use the rights of man to do what we can to bring about a vindication of the rights of God. And subsidiarity is part of that, that, that process. The Church wisely says, political authority should always be delegated to the lowest possible level where it can be exercised. The matters that pertain to individuals should be exercised at the local level. The matters that pertain to the national common good, such as the national defense, should be exercised at the higher level. But that, that, that relationship has been completely fragmented in, in modern political circumstances.
Yes.
Constant combat now between localities and the federal government over who does what and whose authority operates in a given sphere of activity.
Well, and, and you'll appreciate this. I usually say, basically, any decision that's made at state or federal level, the only one that's going to win are the lawyers, because no matter if the governor does it or the president, it'll always be met by lawsuits. So it's creating a lot of work for lawyers, that conflict, but.
Yeah, I just, just, just completed some work on a Ninth Circuit case, which is another abuse of local authority. San Diego Unified School District has decided that schoolchildren should be injected with these ridiculous vaccines that are obviously failing and now require a third booster shot. So we're talking about four inoculations within the space of a year. So yeah, lawyers are getting, getting busy litigating these issues with these defiant, basically lunatical school boards that think that they can impose such things as a vaccine mandate on schoolchildren.
Well, and many times of such lunacy in history, it's the church that helped bring society out of this. But sadly, in our day, the church has sort of signed on to this modern liberal, as you said, insanity, loss of reason. And so we'll talk about a couple of stories about that on the church side. And first is a story that I saw this week about a new icon that was unveiled at the once and hopefully future Catholic University of America. You know, university founded to be the premier university of the bishops. It appeared this week, this image, and it's disturbing, disturbing image. What we see here is this image, which is supposed to be a Pietà type image with the Blessed Mother holding crucified Christ. However, and again, this is not just speculation looking at it, the university has confirmed. The image of Christ is, has been substituted with an image of George Floyd, the man who sadly died, but in a confrontation with police. You know, what, what do you think a Catholic person is thinking or not thinking in creating an image like this to portray our Lord?
That's just, it's one of innumerable symptoms. You couldn't possibly assess all of them of the process that began after the Second Vatican Council. I remember Dietrich von Hildegard Ron said about this process back in 1973. He said, the poison of our epic is slowly seeping into the church herself. And many have failed to see the apocalyptic decline of our time. That, that image you just showed to me is utterly repellent. It's a sign of a degenerate state of religion, even within the Catholic Church, in much of the human element of the church. Church itself cannot be overcome ultimately by the devil, because the gates of hell will not prevail against it. But there is no divine promise against corruption in much of the human element of the church. And that's what we're seeing here with that bizarre, ridiculous, disgusting blasphemous image.
Again, it really symbolizes in many ways, you know, what Paul VI said at the end of the council, that we too have the religion or the cult of man, that it's substituting man for, for God, in this case for clearly just cheap political, you know, grandstanding. So, you know, every politician, you know, Democrats particularly, want to grandstand and get a little soundbite and look like they're hip, you know, with it. And, and it's sort of sad to see these bishops and clergy kind of wanting, running behind them like, oh yeah, we can be on board too. Like, look, look what we did. We made an image with this, this George Floyd figure. It's almost pathetic to see ministers of Christ, you know, acting like this, wanting to get little soundbites for, for their wokeness.
Well, Jacques Maritain, the deluded visionary who thought that the Second Vatican Council would usher in a new era in the church, was somewhat disillusioned by the time he wrote The Peasant of Giron. And he, he was appalled at the spectacle of the church prostrating itself before the world. But that's exactly what Paul VI did, in order to appeal to the world. You see, we're down with you folks. We understand the modern, the modern world and the wonderful things about technology and modern culture. And we appreciate you. And a wave of optimism, said Paul VI, had fled out from the council to the modern world to bless its many undertakings. I mean, the naivety, naivete there was just absolutely stupefying. And the optimism was fatuous, to say the least. And it's been, had been revealed as totally worthless, the whole enterprise of opening to the world. And a disaster, Paul VI himself said, not long after the council, that the opening to the world has become a veritable invasion of the church by worldly thinking. And now we're in the final stages of that. These, these prelates, too many of them at least, and certainly the current document at the chair of Rome, the Sheriff Peter, think, think more about carbon emissions than they do the salvation of souls. It's an obvious fact. And this pope is a great promoter of the divinely inspired vaccine, as Governor of New York calls it.
Well, and it reminds me, actually, there's a church I went into once that had Stations of the Cross created some time ago and sort of liked that image. Instead of our Lord, it portrayed Che Guevara, the communist revolutionary as, as our Lord. And again, in addition to being blasphemous, what's interesting about it is it's almost outdated, these things before they put them up. So again, this was decades after Che Guevara appeared. I remember looking, just thinking, most people just think, what do you have that for? That's old news. And same thing with this. So create this image and in two years from now, people will go, who's that? Why is that weird image here? What, what is that? And sort of the rush to be contemporary or, or look like you're with the, the modern times, you're always actually looking like you're behind the times.
Yeah, but there's a positive development here, because I'm thinking of an article in The Economist that came out not too long ago, the title of which was, It's trendy to be traditionalist. And the theme of the article was that young people have had enough of this nonsense of these pathetic old prelates chasing after the world, always about 25 to 50 years behind the times, with their polyester vestments and their ridiculous larynx. And the young people who care about the faith, who still practice it, want the real thing, which is why they're flocking to the Latin mass centers. And which is why the nasty old man who sits on the chair of Peter is determined to stamp out that movement. He cannot comprehend how young people could have had enough of this insanity. The Church of Woodstock, if you want to call it something that relates to that era, Vatican II was the Woodstock of the church. And now these, these prelates cling to their memories of Woodstock, the Vatican II Woodstock, like people that went to Woodstock due to the vinyl albums that they keep in their attics from the golden age of rock and roll. It's really quite pathetic. But the young people know what is what, and they want the real thing. So there is a positive development in the midst of this sorry state of affairs with the non-ogenarian and septagenarian and octogenarian prelates, among whom is Francis.
Yes, yes. Well, and one more story, and this I read in a report by LifeSite News and occurring in the Archdiocese of Berlin. So as many of her viewers may know, last week, or just the week before Thanksgiving, the US Bishops Conference met and passed a document about the reception of communion, which, like most things they do, avoided the actual elephant in the room, the issue. But what about unworthy politicians who create public scandal by receiving communion? There was some talk about addressing it and they ran, they did what the apostles did at the feet of the cross and ran and hid and said nothing about it. So that politicians like Nancy Pelosi and Joe Biden are not having canon law actually enforced against them. So while they're allowed access to the sacraments, the Archdiocese of Berlin decided there are some more threatening, dangerous people that should be denied access into the sacraments. And those are those who do not have their papers, their vaccine papers to show that they have their, their imprimatur from the state to be able to go to communion. And they've said for Advent and Christmas, it's sort of bizarre, people who do not present their proof that they have received this thing cannot come into the church and cannot participate in, in the sacraments. But then they concede, well, in a few days, maybe on Sundays, there'll be a special service for them. So if you can't get into the real one, you get your own separate little service where you can all, all go. Which, if you're actually thinking like a health person and you actually believed the nonsense, you would think that'd be the worst thing to do. So if these people who are actually could get sick because they don't have the supposed thing to protect them, let's all put them all together and all get, get them all sick. But on top of that, they also banned communion received in the mouth, that you can only receive on the tongue, even if you have your papers presented that you are, you're meeting there. So this is where we've come, where, where the Catholic Church is discriminating against people, not on the basis of mortal sin, but on the basis of some government dictat.
Oh, you're perfectly entitled to receive holy communion if you support and even subsidize mass murder of innocent children. But now we have the New Gospel, the New Gospel of the with it modern church, according to which whoever eats the bread or drinks the cup of the Lord without being vaccinated, shall be guilty of the body and blood of the Lord. That's what we're talking about at this point. Well, it's just another sign of degeneracy in the human element of the church. And it's a problem we have to deal with, like any other crisis in the church, although this one appears to be the worst in her 2000 year history. But again, let's stress the positive result that's coming out of this, that young people are turning away from the degenerate Catholicism offered by these doddering remnants of the Vatican II era and looking for the real thing. And the real thing will sooner or later return when the church is restored. There will always be a restoration following a crisis in the church. Her entire history shows us that. If the church could recover from the Aryan crisis, when the whole world awoke and groaned to find that it was Aryan, she'll eventually recover from this one as well.
Eventually, in the triumph of the Immaculate Heart, if, and we do our part, as said, in the, in the local elections, run for school board within, in the church, observe the five first Saturdays, you know, pray for the consecration of Russia is, is the, is, you know, the same thing we can do. It's our part. It's, we can't consecrate Russia, but we can work towards its preparation, certainly. Well, one final note in this story, as I mentioned, they banned reception of communion in the, in the mouth, has to be in the hand. And again, I find this interesting, because one of the other things the US bishops did when they wrote this document is I read a lot of hand wringing. Oh, oh, two thirds to 75% of Catholics don't believe in the real presence anymore. We don't understand this. We need to do something about it. But no comprehension that actions, just like with school boards, images, actions, symbols, teach. And the reception of communion in the hand, if I can just drop it in your hand and you can walk away with it, an image that was caught in France at an Episcopal mass by Gloria TV, guy just put in his hand, folded up his hand and walked off with it. Doesn't that just undermine the belief that the bishops are wringing their hands about? That people don't believe this is Christ anymore?
This is not theological rocket science. If you treat, if you treat, if you treat the Holy Eucharist like a piece of bread, people will come to think that it's just a piece of bread. Anybody can handle it. You put it in your hand like a roll at Thanksgiving dinner and you just pop it in your mouth as you walk away from what used to be the communion realm. Now it's just a place where the bread line terminates as people walk up with their hands extended to receive their piece of bread. What did they expect would happen? And Paul VI, by the way, when he authorized the abuse of communion in the hand, after the bishops, certain bishops in defiance of church law went ahead and, and stalled it anyway. Even when he authorized it, he warned of the potential for profanation of the sacrament and loss of Eucharist. for profanation of the sacrament and loss of Eucharistic faith. And insisted that the law of the church was still communion on the tongue. And yet he allowed it. And we know what happens in the post conciliar epic. Every option becomes the norm and the norm becomes at best an option. And now we see that the norm excluded outright and rendered illegal. It's the same process, it's the same process in civil society. If you allow the option to promote error and, and allow it to compete with truth, error drives truth out of the marketplace of ideas. And those who defend the truth are ousted from polite society. So what is right and true becomes anathema. And in the church, what is right and true becomes forbidden. And the process works because you're introducing corruptions into an otherwise incorrupt situation so that the corruption prevails and becomes the dominant feature of the human element of the church. And what do we see in the human element of the church? Widespread corruption on every level, in terms of morality, even financial corruption, falling away by vast numbers of the faithful. Diocese is consolidating churches because there's nobody to fill most of them. Catholic schools closing everywhere. And yet these people, these remnants of Vatican II, ruthlessly and relentlessly pursue their so-called reforms, like a physician who's malpracticing on his patient by giving him the wrong medication and tells the nurse to triple the dose.
Right. But doctor, it's killing them. Give them more, right? Yes. Well, there you have it from our perspective this week after Thanksgiving, looking at some developments in church and state and seeing a lot, a lot of parallels there. But thank you, Chris, for sharing your thoughts. Thank you everyone for listening. And again, remember, we don't, we don't talk about these crises to just bury our head in the sand and oh, what am I to do? Woe is me, but to know, to know the problem so we can act, so we can do something about it. And again, whatever our station in life.
Exactly. This is not just a gloom and doom broadcast. We're telling people, we're telling people that the worse it becomes, the greater the hope of a restoration. Because when things become this bad in salvation history, there's always a correction. It may not be a pleasant correction. God may have to do it the hard way. But we don't worry about things like that in divine providence. The Lord of History will take care of the situation. And we must never forget that each of us has his own individual end on this earth to worry about. The end of the world is coming for each of us and that's our primary concern. The concern for the salvation of our own souls and those of the members of our own family.
Again, we don't, we don't end at our final judgment saying, God, why didn't you bring about the consecration of Russia? Because God's response, why didn't you pray for it?
And why didn't Trump get reelected, Lord?
Yeah. That'd be an interesting conversation. But well, again, thank you again. We look forward to seeing you next time and we'll discuss current issues in church and state. See you next time.